Appeals. Thank you.
Do we have our other folks join?
I see we've got Chris. Oh, good. Good. This evening, we will proceed with four board members, not our usual five. And my name is Lee Levy. I am the acting chairman this evening. And if our other board members would identify themselves for the minutes of the meeting.
Chris Gavrilede is present.
Chris, thank you.
Danielle Sancheck, present.
Thank you. Tom, we need you to unmute yourself.
Okay, how's this? Tom Farkas, president?
Thank you. And that is it. So let me read the official statement. This is the June 16th, 2022 meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. Members of the public can call in and listen to this meeting. They will not be able to speak or see any of the meeting participants. Each meeting will use a unique meeting webinar ID. Please find the information using the official link. Members of the public who wish to provide live comments will need to register in advance. And I hope you have and use the Zoom meeting platform. All participants will be muted upon entering the meeting. To speak, click the raise your hand indicator. And you will be called upon by the host of the meeting during public comment section. Please find the information using the link above. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting but are not participating can view a live stream on the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. This stream is delayed by approximately 20 seconds. Please find the information using the link provided. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment are encouraged to submit those via email in advance of the meeting. So that may be a little late tonight. The first piece of information I want to provide for our board members and public is the first two items on our agenda. Item 22-0519-01, Sadida family will not be heard this evening. They have asked for continuance and we will vote on that. The second item, 22-061601 BBB Pulaski LLC at 10 Pulaski Street has also asked that they be heard at the next meeting when we have five members of the board sitting. So we shall proceed this evening with item 22-061602 Carver Foundation, City of Norwalk, property located at 7 Academy Street. So Chris, if you would read the information provided for this item, we can proceed.
Sure. Variants to increase the maximum building area from 12,060 square feet to 15,600 square feet. Section 118-360C for additions to a community center and de-residence zone, lot 28 located in industrial zone one. Property located at 7 Academy Street, District 1, Block 25, Lot 20 and 28. Request: The applicant seeks the variance of maximum building area to construct additions to the front and rear of the existing building. Background: The building has been owned and operated by the Carver Foundation as a community center for decades. The city owns the land. Analysis and findings: Maximum allowed lot coverage is 12,060 square feet. The existing conditions lot coverage is 14,500 square feet. The proposed additions will bring the lot coverage to approximately 15,600 square feet. The unusual parceling situation could be considered a practical difficulty if lot merging lot line revisions is not a possibility.
Thank you, Chris. If the representative for this application would come forward, identify themselves and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is David Waters. I'm an attorney in Stamford, Connecticut. And I'm representing the Carver Foundation here this evening on a pro bono basis. With me here is Kathleen Poirier, who is the architect of record and Novolet Peterkin of the Carver Foundation. I'm going to just quickly for a couple of housekeeping matters. First of all, just for the record, we do understand that there is a board constituted of four members tonight, and we are electing to go forward with the understanding that that does mean that we would need a unanimous affirmative vote in order to have the variance requested granted. Second, housekeeping item would just be to note that the notices to the adjoining property owners have been sent out. And the certified return receipts have been provided to your staff and should be included in the record as well. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Kathy Poirier so that she can walk you through what exactly is being requested. And then Novolet will speak a bit about the Carver Foundation. And then I'll come back and we can talk about the specifics of the hardship.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if I'm allowed to, so I could show you a little slideshow as we talk about the project.
Please go ahead.
So this is 7 Academy Street where the George Washington Carver Community Center resides. This building was actually constructed back in 1975. It's a two-story pre-engineered building with slab floors and large steel frame structural systems. Half the building is dedicated to the gymnasium. And it's got exterior concrete block walls on the first floor and half inch thick corrugated metal panels on the second story. The other half of the building is offices and community room spaces and other needed support spaces. And its exterior walls are all windows and that half inch thick corrugated metal panels. Those metal panels don't don't meet today's energy codes. The building isn't sprinkled. The building has no elevator. And the second floor spaces therefore are not accessible to people with physical limitations. And also, the current main entrance of the building is also used as the means of egress and 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 it has only makeshift health and safety measures and no real safety monitoring system in in terms of keeping out unwanted intruders. The building's bathrooms and water fountain facilities are all the originals. And there are no not up to today's accessibility standards or sanitary standards. And the building lighting is old fluorescent lighting, also not energy efficient. And so you know, it's it's got a lot of things that need to be addressed. The community center's primary function is to provide after-school care and summer care for K through 12 students. And the gymnasium is a vital part of the space to the community center. And it doesn't have any auxiliary support space. And the rear is 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 the playground of the of the of the building. So I'm going to move on to the next slide and kind of give you a brief synopsis of what we're actually looking to do in terms of the master plan goal. We want to build that addition on the front of the building to provide the elevator that's needed to get accessibility to the second floor. We want and we want to improve that building entry to give us that safety that we need and also a separation from the building's egress. We and off the back of the gymnasium, we want to build a teen center. And what that's going to do is it's going to provide support space for the the that gymnasium. Like right now, it's it's sort of just the gym and there is no real ancillary space to it. So when the kids are in the gym, there's no, you know, place for people to be waiting in the wings, so to speak, or utilizing other other functions of gym. And overall, we want to then improve the the building and update the interior as well as the exterior of the building. And then, you know, on on top of that, we're going to establish a new building architecture for the exterior. So on the first floor, the two additions are highlighted in the red box. The this is the gymnasium over on the left-hand side with that teen center. It'll be a two-story space on the back. And the new elevator and entry into the building on the front. Both, I want to make 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 it known too that both of these additions we are, you know, holding true to the the zone setbacks. And and really, the only thing we're 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 seeking the variance for is that that coverage issue we're having. The second floor is 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 showing again the the teen center and the elevator entry on the front of the building. And this is a conceptual drawing of what that the new front will be. This back down here in this corner is the existing exterior building. And you could see, you know, the the steel on the front and and the concrete block. And a little closer view of that front entry. And then on the rear, this is the teen center. This is where it will be located on the back of the building. What makes like this whole parcel really unique is the fact that it 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 it's one parcel here, which which is the one that the building is on. The building is owned by the city of of Norwalk. And I mean, the the property is owned by this, the city of Norwalk, and the the building itself is owned by the Carver Foundation. The Carver Foundation happens to own the property adjacent to it. And then the city of Norwalk owns the three additional properties adjacent to that. And and as you can see in in this slide of the aerial view, the basketball court makes up those 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 four side properties. And the back of the building is the playground and the side is the parking lot. But it really does work as a contiguous piece of property. And the Carver Foundation does maintain all of those properties. So I added in in this slide, the square footages of each of the properties, you know, and and so the next slide is going to show that those lot sizes. And if we added those all up together and came to the grand total, we would have 65,000 and change of lot size, which, you know, would give us a combined allowable coverage of 17,000 square feet, which is actually more than, you know, we're 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 seeking today for the variance. And what's just distinguishing the need for it is the fact that the parcel that the building actually resides on is is only a small piece of it. This is the the map of the survey that 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 you all should have gotten in your packets. And this is, you know, another diagram just showing those the the building itself and the pink is is illustrating what we're adding, which is really quite small, you know, in the grand scheme of the building itself. I'd like to turn it on over to Novolet now, so she could kind of just give you an overview of what the building itself actually provides. Did we lose Novolet?
Oh, I'm here.
Yeah.
I thought you stopped sharing. I still see your screen.
Yeah, yeah. I'll I'll go ahead and and move the slides when you want me to.
Um, so since 1975, when Carver, the Carver Center opened, the center has served Norwalk through events such as, you know, those events and programs that truly build the mind, body, and spirit of all of Norwalk. The more Kathy talked about the most vital space in the community center is the gymnasium where events such as basketball leagues, the basketball tournaments, tennis dance, traditional and holiday events, career fair, summer camp, and even memorial services have met many needs of Norwalk youth and families. With a bequest of $472,000 from the Charlotte Harblit Estate in 2017, Carver built a technology center on the second floor of the community center replete with 32 computers, 24 PCs, eight Macs. And there's also a 3D printer there and and other features and technology tools. But Carver teens lost their space when the technology center was built. We were determined to secure the funding needed to give Norwalk youth and teens a safe and fun space to gather, to unwind, and and just to bond. In 2009, with funding from private donors, we resurfaced the basketball court and transform it from a dupe from a dilapidated basketball court into a new court with new fencing, dusted on light in. And the basketball court doubles as a tennis court and a fully accessible, fully accessible to the entire community. In 2019, with private funding, we built a new age-appropriate playground and added a picnic areas, a picnic area with grills and tables. In 2021, a total renovation of the gymnasium was complete with new bleachers, new floors, safety, safety pattern, new ceiling, and the addition of an audiovisual system. Carver does not have any locks on its on the property other than the building, because we believe that the community should have access and use. The outdoor camera cameras that are there ensure safety. My predecessor, Mr. Fuller, was in support of the redevelopment that happened in the Carver neighborhood. We both voiced our support with the understanding that Carver would one day benefit from this revitalization. But what we've seen is more demand for facilities, including the playground and basketball court, which is used by the the addition of families in the neighborhood. This effort that we are here requesting support for to continue upgrading, modernizing and expanding the Carver Center is a top priority, and we believe that it will deepen Carver's impact into the community. This opportunity to add an elevator, a new entrance, new space for teens, which will be adjacent to the gymnasium, that guarantees maximum usage of a safe and supervised space where Norwalk youth feels a sense of belonging. Thank you.
Kathy, if you could go back to the parcel layout. That's it. Thank you. So members of the of the board, obviously, we need to address the question of practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. And the I think that Kathy has already laid it out to some extent, but it's it's an unusual relationship between Carver and the city of Norwalk. The green lot that you see, the large lot, is actually the the land is owned by the city, but the building is owned by Carver. The yellow lot, the land is owned by Carver. And then the red lots, there are three of them that are just to the top of the diagram, are owned by the city again. And as Kathy had pointed out, if you looked at the entirety of what is being what is actually on the ground there, it's developed as a single development. The building is on one lot, but in fact, all five of these lots together are being used in a common method. And if you took the total volume and of land of all of those five lots, as Kathy had pointed out, if if they were all merged together, you would be able to have coverage of 17,069 square feet, which is far more than what the existing building or the building with these requested improvements would have. So it's it's the practical difficulty here is that the ownership of these properties is not consistent. And the and you have a hole in the donut, which is the property that is owned by Carver. If all of the Norwalk land together were put together and contiguous, then it again would be can it would be conforming. But because of the way that the ownership is held, it becomes a problem that you're only looking at the one parcel that and then using the coverage calculation based upon only that one parcel. The the other piece to it, of course, is that as is seen in the aerial, it is being used as a single parcel. And as Novolet has indicated, it it's used as a basically as a community facility, not only the building, but almost as a community park for the rest of it. And and so it really is to support all of that, that they're asking for the addition and the relief from the strict compliance with the zoning regulations and with respect to the calculation of coverage for this one lot. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And otherwise, that concludes our presentation.
Mr. Waters, I think my biggest question is, what is the technical or legal relationship between the city and the Carver Center?
Yep. There is actually, there are a couple of different agreements. One of them, when the city actually sold the building to the Carver Foundation. And in that
Now, what happened is that the the building was built with money from HUD in 1975, but Carver wasn't in a position to be the fiduciary of its own. So the city became the fiduciary. And then the city never had the this on their books and neither did Carver. And so when we, when I found that out, what we did is we went through the process to be able to put the the building on our books. And that happened several years ago. And then we had the city worked with us. And we had a new lease, a new a new extended lease. I forgot for how many years. So that's been the relationship is that, you know, we get we the city leases from us and then we lease, we lease the land from the city and we own the building that's on it. It's 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 unique. I haven't seen it before, but that's how it is.
It it is it is an odd situation. There was a conveyance of the building from the city to the Carver Foundation to legally vested in the Carver Foundation. As part of that, there was a recognition that it would be used as a community facility. In addition to that, the Carver Foundation, as as Novolet has indicated, there are leases that actually go back and forth between the parties to confirm that the property will be used for these community, community uses. But so so there's it is actually all legally wired with with a number of agreements back and forth between the parties to to confirm the understanding of all of this. But the ownership is a bit bizarre because of the way that it the way that it has been created. But it's been papered so that notwithstanding all of the odd ownership that it is still treated and and used as a single facility.
I just wanted to make sure that this was not an arrangement that might be dissolved or disintegrated you know, within a short period of time. And it sounds like that this is really a relationship that both parties have a an important and important vested interest in both the land and the facility.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. That's exactly correct that the the historically, the parties have put together the documents to make sure that their common goal can be realized in in that this property will be used for the for the intended purposes. And and they've done quite a good job of that, actually, given the, as I say, the way that this whole thing generated.
Okay, good. Any other questions from board members?
I just, I think it's very important for it to be ADA compliant. I'm surprised that it has gone so long since the mid 90s without this coming up. So I'm glad you're correcting it.
Along with energy efficiency.
Yeah.
Both. Because that's the type of problem that, you know, as energy costs escalate, and boy, they're escalating now. It becomes real hardship for nonprofits to to exist. So I think, Tom, you made a very good point. Anyone else wish to?
Neil.
Board wish to speak?
The only comment I would make is it would have been nice to have somebody from the city here supporting the project since the properties are so intertwined. I mean, I'm I'm in favor of the project, but it would have been nice to have somebody here.
Actually, the folks from the city was very helpful in in putting this together and and actually helping with the application process. What's his name? Lou? Louis?
No, Alan Low.
Alan Low. I was very helpful. Yeah.
Yeah, Alan Low was very helpful on this. And and correct me if I'm wrong, either Novolet or Kathy, but it did actually go through action of the Common Council. It was reviewed by land use in order to authorize this application to be made.
That's right. So we did have all this pre-conversations with Alan. And 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 we did indeed go through Common Council and was unanimously approved. And they 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 themselves had to sign the documentation for this 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 ZBA variance request.
So, well, you know, Alan is, I've worked with Alan a long time and I know his integrity. And certainly, if Common Council has reviewed it and approved it, we can't really take issue to that. Anyone else on the board? Do we have any member of the public that wishes to speak in favor of this project?
We do have two people on tonight from the public, both of which have their hands up. So I'll bring them over to speak.
Good.
Just state your name and address for the record, please. And you just have to unmute. T. Gilmore?
Yes, my name is Tremaine Gilmore. I live in Seymour, Connecticut, 6 North Star Drive.
Thank you. And your comments?
Yes, I have worked for the Carver for over 20 years as a teen center manager in various other community events that Ms. Novolet has spoken about earlier. I would just like to say that I think this is truly vital for the community. And I hope that it is approved because just to see kids come in from the community, get plugged into different resources that they didn't once have, and then flourish and go off to college and then come back. And all of that is reciprocated as as they come back and give back as well. So I feel as though it would just add to a So I feel as though it would just add to a great cycle that was started before.
Well, thank you for, thank you for your positive comment.
Thank you.
Second speaker?
If you're dialed in on a phone, you just have to press star seven.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Doug Peoples, twenty-five Poganis Street, Norwalk. Been involved with the Carver Center for over forty-two years, one or another. This particular item that you have in front of you is a no-brainer to encourage the youth to make sure that everybody in the area gets full advantage. Norwalk is one of the only towns in the region that does not have a teen center. Now, it's a vital thing to make sure that our youth as much hands-on activities as they can. And within this building, they can go from education to activity to learning. So this is, this is a no-brainer to even to make sure that this happens. With all the, with all the building that are going around in the city of Norwalk, with every apartment building that is being put forth, every apartment building that is being put up in that area in particular, this particular item is a no-brainer.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak in opposition of this application?
There's nobody else on tonight besides those two.
Very good. Mr. Waters, I've asked you for a closing statement, but everything seems to be positive.
I I am very delighted not to have to make one, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. With that, I will close this item, and we will vote on it closer to the end of the meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, our next item is, if I can find my paperwork, two-two dash zero six one six dash zero three, Angela Moroly, property located at two forty-five Eli Avenue. Chris, would you read the particulars?
Sure. Proposed motor vehicle repair application in neighborhood business zone. Property located at two forty-five Eli Avenue, District Five, Block eighty-three, Lot seventy-five. Request: The applicant seeks approval for K-seven license to operate a replacement, new owner and new name, motor vehicle repair shop. Background: An existing motor vehicle repair operator has been at this location for many years. In nineteen seventy-seven, the board granted motor vehicle approval to add used car sales to the existing repair shop. Analysis and findings: There is no change in the use proposed expansion of the building. Per state statute, the action is to update licensing documentation only. The board will act as an agent of the state to decide whether this is an appropriate use. In granting the license, you are affirming this is an appropriate use. This applicant will also have to make an application for special permit to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Will the representative, please step forward, identify themselves?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, this is very new to me. I've not done this before, so I can get through this. My name is Billy alone. I am the one that is a search of getting approval and to continue the repairs in the this location.
Bill, is that it?
That was it.
You, do you want me to share your survey or image?
Yeah, yes, that would be great. I'm sorry. That is the old front. We're looking to present it with newer look and keep it clean, you know, complement the neighborhood.
So you will be updating the building?
The, you know, plantings, shrubbery, to not have that or repair image, I guess.
So, Michelle, I'm sorry to interrupt. Michelle, if you go back to the photos and scroll down, there's the proposed image there.
Okay.
Tammy, I'm I'm a little confused on this. Can I ask you a question at this point? Tammy?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. What are we exactly voting on? If this, if it looks like it's permitted in nineteen seventy-seven, so what are we?
Right, so for the K seven license, yeah, I understand. For the K-seven license, the state requires, if it's even just a new owner, that they have to apply for a new license. Recent statute, statute changes in put that duty of oversight for appropriate appropriateness of the use essentially to sign, to agree to sign the K-seven license on the local zoning board of appeals. But in our regulations, we still identify motor vehicle uses as special permit. So that's why, unfortunately, all applicants now for motor vehicle, whether it's repair or sales, will have, even if it's just a new ownership, so this, again, this is an existing, longtime existing repair shop, just proposing a new owner. They'll still continue to have to go to ZBA first to essentially get an okay for the K-seven license through the state, and then they'll have to apply through the Planning and Zoning Commission for a special permit.
So so for forty-five years, this business has been running as is, and will continue to run as is. Is that safe to say?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely. Yes. It's the same manner that it's been the last three generations.
Chris, we've approved a number of these, especially when they're just moving from one owner to another.
Okay. Does I don't have, I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to speak in favor of this application? I'll assume we don't have anybody.
No hands.
No hands, and probably no one wishing to speak against the application.
And again, don't see any hands.
Okay, Bill, that was quick and simple. I don't think we have to ask you for any further statement. And with that, I will close this, this item and move to discuss and take a vote on it. I have no issues with this. I think that under new ownership, hopefully, the building will be upgraded, new signage, some landscaping and plantings, and it can be, continue to be a thriving business.
Absolutely, absolutely. We are definitely looking to change that first impression.
Okay, Bill, unfortunately, we're not taking comments from you at this point.
Sorry.
This is a discussion amongst the board.
Got it. Sorry.
Any other board member have comments? Well, then I will ask that we we vote on this item. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. The vote is unanimous, and the application has been approved.
Thank you.
Okay. We taking in reverse order, item two-two dash zero six one six dash zero two, Carver Foundation, City of Norwalk. I think this is a very worthwhile application. It will bring this building into the twenty-first century, meeting energy codes and life safety codes. And I I feel it's something that I can vote for an approval on. Other board members wish to weigh in? If not, I would just ask for a vote.
Well, let's have a motion.
Oh, that's what we need, a motion.
I I make a motion to approve this.
A second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor of this application, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, the item is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Has everyone read the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments, corrections to be made from the board members?
No.
Hearing none? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May nineteenth meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I I was not at the last meeting, so.
Okay, so we have one abstention and three approvals. We carry the motion. What else is on our list? Status of training. Tammy, what can you tell us?
No new developments there. We'll have something together soon, I think, or at least a, at least an outline for you of one. Yeah, so. I put that on there, and he asked me to include that in the agendas going forward, so.
I think that's a good thing. Any other board members have anything else they wish to discuss or bring up? Hearing none, I will make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing.
Thank you, everyone.
I know, somebody's got a second.
Oh, yeah.
Second that.
Thanks, Tom.
Very good. Thank you, Tom.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
I would, before we get off, I would like to thank Michelle for kind of holding my hand early this evening as I hoped to make it home in time to Kentucky, to conduct this public hearing, so thank you, Michelle.
Sure, glad you made it. Team tactics.
Touch and go.
Yeah. Have a good night, everyone.
We're concluded. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.